I'd like to call this March 13th, 2025 Board of Education Work Session to Order. George, can you take the role?
Mrs. Bissell?
Here.
Mrs. Kilbane?
Here.
Mr. Miko?
Here.
Ms. Stachek?
Here.
And Mrs. Hausum?
Here.
All present.
Could everyone rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Next on our agenda are the strategic priorities. Our district has developed and is currently engaged in a three-year strategic plan which reflects the values, beliefs, and hopes of our students, staff, parents, and community. There are four strategic priorities to the plan: transforming teaching and learning, aligning staff and resources, cultivating culture and climate, and leveraging funding and facilities. Our strategic priorities give actionable focus to our district's purpose and mission and guide the work of our strategic plan. Next, we do have a change on the agenda. The following change was made to the agenda under Section G, Superintendent's Report, Business Services. Item one was adjusted. The quote amount was changed. Next, we have public comment. We do have two public comments tonight. Jim Adams, if you'd like to come to the podium, could state your name, your address, and you have approximately three minutes.
Was the time allowed?
About three minutes.
Okay. Jim Adams, I live at 10756 Waterfall Road in Metalwood. Been a resident of the city for over 30 years. My three children went through this Strongsville school system. One's a graduate of Ohio State, the other is Northwestern, and my son went to Columbia. I'm here on behalf of vouchers tonight. I'd like to know what the school system's position is and if there's plans to join this lawsuit that's going to start, I think, April 1st. Can I get an answer to that, the start?
So I know that there is a lawsuit. Normally, we don't, this is a time for the public to talk to the board. We normally don't engage. And once you're done, you know, we can decide if we want to answer the questions. If not, I can call you after the meeting.
Okay. So this voucher system, my understanding, I hope I have my numbers are correct, 53 students took part in the previous school year. And this year, there are 76 low-income students participating in the voucher program and 935 students in the non-low income, or another way to say it would be affluent families. This money going out of Strongsville, my calculation is based on an average per pupil cost in the state of Ohio is $5,000. High school is normally $8,000. K through eight is usually $6,000, but we're going to go with the $5,000 figure. Strongville losing $5,000, I mean, $5 million per year. I assume these are correct. I have three different organizations that have given me these rough figures. I just think it's a tragedy going on that this amount of money is leaving our school district and shortchanging the students involved in all of our public schools. This is wrong, and I hope the school system would join this lawsuit and hopefully the constitutionality of what they're doing is wrong. And initially, Wojtych brought this program in, former mayor and governor of Ohio, for low-income students, and now this has just exploded. And I'm really upset because I know what the system did for my three kids. They have achieved greatly. My youngest daughter is a diplomat. All three of them have done well. And to see this money being shortchanged from these current students is appalling to me. It's wrong. I've been here 34 years. I have approved every school levy that came in front of me. That's why I moved here, because of the school system. That was the thinking back in the day, in the early '90s, late '80s, to do that. Go to Brexville, go to a good school system. And so I'm dismayed, to say the least, and I probably have some angst in my voice about this. So I hope you have me back while you're debating this and let me know what your stance is. Thank you for your time.
Next, Matt Heneman. If you could state your name and address?
Sure.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Matt Heneman. I live at 11806 Harbor Light Drive. I actually reside in North Walton, but my kids have all gone through Strongsville because they live with their mother, or address-wise. I've had five kids go through this district. Two of them are still in the district today, and this by far, especially at the Strongsville Middle School, is the worst year I have seen when it comes to pickup and drop-off and transportation issues with the school. I understand transportation has come up. Dr. Robber, I just received your slides on that and have read that, and I understand there's a shortage on a number of things, not only from the transportation issue and issues that this district is facing from that end, but also from teachers. But I have had to drop off my daughter now for several months due to a number of reasons, and I have sat there and I have watched students, staff members, parents almost be hit, almost be run over. I have watched staff members get into it with parents. I have personally gotten into arguments with parents, and just recently, my 17-year-old daughter, who picked up my daughter from this middle school, was cussed out by a parent in the Strongsville Middle School line. We have to do something better. I will give credit to the staff at the Strongsville Middle School. Mr. Tiloni and some of his staff have done, tried to do things, putting out cones, standing outside, having teachers there, but something has got to be done here. This year, I've watched it be backed up to Pearl Road. I've watched buses who have the right-of-way pretty much almost get into accidents in the Strongsville Middle School parking lot because of these things. Like, whether it be, there's enough parents that I have seen sit in that line from 2:15 on, you know, and this is me spewing out off the top of my head. Why can't parents volunteer to stand in that line? You know, Officer Dan, at the beginning of the year when we started, finally got it to, there was two lines in the morning, right? But even still, you have parents who are cutting off buses to drop off their kids in the morning. Somebody's going to get hit. A child's going to end up hurt, and then whose responsibility does that become? It's on school property? It's, you know, who's responsible at that point when it's our kids that get to those schools? And that's my concern today because I literally have to sit there and watch my daughter walk around a car and almost get hit either in the morning or in the afternoon. So that's why I'm here today, because this needs to be addressed, and if we run into the problems next year, as the transportation slides say, is there's a number of options out there, this is only going to increase with student drop-off in that. High school's one thing. They're a little bit older, there's a little bit better walkways there for the kids and a little bit better scenario because of the way the school's set up, but at the middle school, going around the building in these elementary schools, somebody's going to end up hurt. Thank you.
Next on our agenda, we have approval of minutes. Motion to approve the minutes of the February 27th, 2025 Regular Board Meeting. All audio recordings will be a permanent part of the minutes and are available upon request through the Treasurer's Office. Video recordings shall be maintained based on the availability of the selected digital online platform. Now I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Reba.
Thank you, Mrs. Hausum. Under my agenda, we just want to give an exciting update about our Model Mustang Experience, our State of the Schools that's coming up here in a couple weeks. So Dan's going to come join us, and we've got some slides up there that Jenny and Dan are going to give a preview to. See, the reason they're doing the preview is I have no part of this anymore.
No.
So, good news for everybody. No more speeches by Cameron, so they'll share kind of what's in store, which we're really excited about.
You took my joke.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I was going to say, we're boxing you out this year. So just want to take a few minutes here and share with everyone, we're super excited about the Model Mustang Experience, which is our re-envisioned State of the Schools for 2025. And what we really want to showcase is, we want our students telling their story and their experiences along with our staff, but we're thrilled to have, I think it's over 50 tables, 50 exhibits, 50 presentations of students and staff showcasing the learning and the teaching that is going on in our district each and every day. So as you know, if you can advance the slide, Jim. As you know, we've had a focus this year on definitely teaching and learning and really focusing in on our Tier One instruction as a district, which means that we want to create experiences for our students where they, we ensure that they are experiencing high-quality materials, that there are effective instructional strategies happening, that we're looking at data, we're making decisions based on the data, and making sure that we're meeting each student's individual needs. It's still very much a work in progress. We're chipping away at it slowly, but as I presented at the chamber a few weeks ago, and when many of us went to school, that first picture, which is, by the way, an AI-created picture, that's not from our district right now, but that's very much what school looked like. The teacher was in front of the room, sharing information, providing a lot of direct instruction, and students have to sit in rows and raise their hand to speak. What we are striving to get to are the three pictures that you see below, which are from our district currently, right now, where students are interacting. They're not only learning the content that they need to learn based on their level and where they are in school, but also being able to apply the essential skills that they need for their future that are, we ascribe to through our Model Mustang. So we're really excited to showcase the things that our students are learning, so I'm going to turn it over to Dan to kind of give you more specifics of things that people will experience on March 26.
Good evening, everyone. So you might ask yourself, what will our community experience when they attend the Model Mustang Experience on Wednesday, March 26? It is at Strongsville High School, and our main gym is going to be set up with interactive tables where attendees will be able to explore the innovative ways our students are learning in the classroom. All schools are going to be represented, and in many cases, as Jenny mentioned, students are going to be providing their experiences firsthand with those who attend. Hearing from our students in this way, I feel, and I've seen it last year when we did this, same type of concept, it's really inspiring. It's going to provide the many examples of the ways our district is building essential skills in all of our students, leading to their future success. As Jenny mentioned, here's just a few examples of the more than 50 tables that we have for our Model Mustang Experience. We're going to have preschool students that you'll be able to interact with as they demonstrate their learning with magnets and Legos. We'll have teachers and students from our elementary schools showcasing the building thinking classrooms and the way students are engaged in deeper learning opportunities in a number of different subjects that they are going, or that they're learning from in their classrooms. SMS ELA students are going to share their classroom experience with Literature Circles, which encourage learning about points of view, individual experiences, and individual perspectives, and how that relates to their texts that they're reading. The SHS Mustang Inclusive Learning Environment, some of you know it as the Mile, that team will be providing samples of their coffee that they serve each day to our staff, and the Derby's going to be open for all of the great Mustangs gear that our students create and sell as they continue to build their life skills. In addition to these activities, participants will be encouraged to find clues as part of a scavenger hunt that we'll have that night. Finding all of the hidden clues will enter those in a raffle at the end of the night and featuring prizes from our local businesses. And then we're also going to have QR codes set up throughout the event for participants and attendees to share feedback about what they are experiencing at the event, and also providing a chance to ask additional questions about the examples that they're experiencing about our classroom learning. Just as people will experience when they attend on the night of the event, we thought it would be more impactful for you to hear from our students directly. So here are three very excited third-grade students from Kinzner to give their point of view.
People will get to learn what we do in school and what we would do in class for Asian China unit.
I think, like, explaining, like, how, like, we did in all the specials, like, how, like, we made, like, that dragon.
People outside of the school could learn what we, like, experienced, and then we'll give it to them, and it's like, we'll be teaching them.
Yeah, it's kind of like we're the teachers.
Yeah.
We'll see you at the Model Mustang Experience.
So as the kids at Kinzner so eloquently said, we're very excited. We're very excited about this opportunity, another chance for our community to be engaged with our students and our staff, and to really gain an understanding of the different ways that we are building Model Mustang skills in our students. It's Wednesday, March 26th, at Strongsville High School, and the event runs from 6 o'clock in the evening to 8 o'clock PM.
So Dan, and Jenny, just to clarify, there's no official start time. It starts at 6 o'clock, but you could come at any time and wander around and see everything that's going on. Is that correct?
That's correct. I think what we're striving for is to really model the learning experience that our kids have the agency in their classroom. We want our public also to have agency of when they want to start coming, how they want to go through the exhibit, so there's really no rules. It's just kind of show up and see as many things as you want to see, but we really want to give that, model that experience that we want for our students each and every day.
So we know all five of you will be there to experience. We continue to invite the entire community, and as, throughout the upcoming weeks, we will send out more communications, invitations, to remind people and get them out to see all that's going on in our school district right now. Any other questions on our State of the Schools?
Nope, just looking forward to it.
Thanks, Dan. So at this time, I'm going to transition to our Business Service Report, and Steve is going to come up with a few items under his agenda.
Good evening, everyone. There's three items in the Business Services section. The first one is a high school stage purchase, and this is a resolution for us to purchase a stage from Martin Public Seating, and it's going to be used for graduation, homecoming, and other activities as needed. The total cost for this purchase is $85,106.52, and the quote is attached.
Do I have a motion?
Second.
Second. Motion by Ms. Stachek, second by Mrs. Kilbane. So Steve, we've had graduation outside the past two years, correct, or longer than that?
Longer.
And we've rented a stage?
So we've rented a stage in the past from a local stage, a local company as well as chairs. So this purchase, per the quote, is for a 24-foot by 56-and-a-half-foot stage, which is a little larger than what we've had, but not by much at all. And it's a modular stage, so it's a 4-by-8 unit. There's 42 of those 4-by-8. So we could vary how big the stage is for different venues. The reality of it is, is that every time we rent the stage at this point, it's averaging around $13,000 for the stage and chairs, but that doesn't include the fact that we're on the delivery schedule for the company, and once the stage is set up, we're also then investing time and overtime for the maintenance department to set up and watch over the stage to make sure that no shenanigans or tomfoolery happen before graduation. So this would not only allow us to set it up and tear it down on our own timeframe, but to eliminate that operational cost. And the return on investment for this is, basically, once we've used it mathematically six-and-a-half times, we would have paid for it. So if we use it for both graduation and homecoming, without coming up with any other creative uses for this, and that's district-wide, we will have, after our six-and-a-half time of using it, paid for it. The additional information that I feel like you need to know is, up until this point, we have not purchased any ramps for the stage. So if we had students that were not able to climb the stairs, we had to adjust the ceremony, this does include an AVA-accessible ramp that will go up to the back of the stage. So as we have students that have mobility issues and concerns, we can include them up on the stage where we've not been able to before, entrance on the stage, and then exit back to the way that they came on. I think that's something that, from talking to people in Student Services, is more prevalent going through the grades, and that's something that we would quite honestly need to attach to a rental fee. I don't know what that rental fee would be, but I do know $13,000 this year, will not be $13,000 next year, will not be whatever that number. It's going to be incremental, the rent charges, and I felt like now is the time that we've established that we're doing graduation outside on our property, talking with the high school administration, that this is a good time to purchase this equipment.
What's the life expectancy of said stage?
I mean, realistically, the only thing we'd ever need to do is it comes with a carpet surface. It's all aluminum frame, so as long as we treat it respectfully, I mean, life expectancy, I could guess 10 to, 15 to 20 years, but really, it's just dependent on how much we use it. And then, like I said, at that point, it would be redoing the carpet top. This also comes with skirting. It's everything we've been used to, plus the ramp, and now it's ours, and we don't have to worry about other people's schedule to get it onto the campus.
And if we, if someone breaks chairs, we can always get extra chairs?
Correct. And that's 600 chairs that we're purchasing with this.
Do we use it for anything else? Do we rent it for anything else currently besides graduation?
The price point, no. But with this, the uses are unlimited, and like I said, with it being modular, even if we use a portion of it, that's what we've saved in the portion to rent.
You're going to store it in your office?
Not mine. Dr. Reba said he would gladly store it.
Where are we going to store it?
We have sheds that we're building outside for storage purposes. We would be looking at, if we can't fit it into the current shed that we have because there's too much storage going in there, it would be a modest investment of a couple thousand dollars more to get a shed, and then we would install it internally, and that would be the primary storage area for that. But it would all be self-contained within the stadium.
If other districts rent stages from other places, would we be able to rent our stage to them?
That is, that's one of my thoughts, is once we procure this and we get everything established for ourselves, I don't see any reason why we couldn't draw up something with our legal counsel to say to neighboring districts, we would love to facilitate a stage for your events as well. I just want to make sure I don't overpromise. I want to make sure I don't overpromise, and we're taking care of ourselves first and foremost, because it's our investment, but I do think there would be an opportunity to help neighboring school districts once we've taken care of the events that we need to take care of.
We show up to graduation, there's no stage, because we kind of have somebody else. Any other questions? All right, George, can you take the role?
Ms. Stachek?
Yes.
Mrs. Kilbane?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mrs. Hausum?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissell?
Yes.
The next item on the agenda is a discussion concerning the administrative offices. So I believe it was two months back, the board entered into an agreement for the property at 14701 Pearl Road, formerly the Rite Aid property. At that point, I was tasked with the, I was tasked with, sorry, it's evading me, the action of doing a fit plan. And I teamed with a local architect. We took all the operations that we currently run out of this building and methodically went through in a fit plan to see if we could, at first, even fit into the space, because we're moving from a 33,000-square-foot building into a just under 15,000-square-foot. So what we found is that while it's possible for us to fit, it would be a very tight squeeze, and it does not allow for any possibility of any other growth out of this building, which would already tax buildings that are stretched to the limit. So there's that. And then, as we were going through, if you, you know, I'm sure people have been in a Rite Aid, if not the Rite Aid that we're looking at. It's a retail space. It has high windows because it's trying to get light in, but it's designed a certain way. What we started to realize is that we needed so many spaces that would be private because of the nature of some of the conversations that we have dealing with students, student data, and also just conference rooms, to have something that was up to the ceiling, an open plan would not work, and the investment that we would need to build out the building would really, at that point, it would honestly be the proverbial square peg in a round hole because we're trying to make a building something it isn't. It's open retail space that then we would try to be shoehorning in enclosed office space. By the time we did that, by the time we looked at the fit plan, it's the opinion of myself, the architect, Dr. Reba, once we talked about all of the, well, if I can speak for him, all of the ins and outs of this and the pros and the cons. It would move on to the third item, which would be my recommendation to vacate that agreement we had until April 15th to make this decision. I just think, in the spirit of being a good neighbor, getting this done and not, and dragging it out to the 15th, just because that's what we're allowed to do, and the agreement is not very neighborly of us, so it would be my recommendation to the board that we would vacate that agreement, and we would look at some other options that are available to us.
So under Agenda Item Number Two, which is the discussion, if there's any other discussion that we want to have about the Rite Aid property or the process that Steve went through, we could have that now, because as he said, the next item is you guys making a vote on to vacate that. So any other discussion about the work Steve did for Rite Aid or the?
I agree. Just to say, I agree.
All right.
Thanks, everyone, for the process.
Well, thank you for the opportunity to see what we could, what we could do. It was a, you know, like every opportunity, there's maybe some growth there, there's some opportunity for us to do some things there, but at this point, I just can't go forward in good conscience and say that this would be the best fit for the district at this time.
So Item Three?
Item Three is a resolution, be it resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent, that Strongsville City Schools vacate the purchase agreement with Hana Commercial Real Estate to purchase property located at 14701 Pearl Road, Strongsville, Ohio, and the agreement is attached at this point.
Do I have a motion?
Second.
Second. Motion by Ms. Stachek, second by Mrs. Kilbane. Are there any other questions, comments? All right. George can take the role?
Ms. Stachek?
Yes.
Mrs. Kilbane?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mrs. Hausum?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissell?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thanks, Steve.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have a couple under, our couple items under the curriculum report tonight. We have two overnight trips. The first is a trip for our high school girls varsity and junior varsity lacrosse teams to go to Worthington, Ohio, April 11th to 12th, to participate in a lacrosse tournament. Transportation is via school bus paid by the district, and lodging and meals will be paid by the students and athletic boosters. The second trip is for our high school boys and girls varsity and junior varsity cross-country teams to travel to Mason, Ohio, September 5th or 6th, to participate in an invitational there, as the same as the first one. We provide the busing. The participants and the boosters will support lodging and meals. We then have two revisions. The first is revision to September 12th Agenda for a service agreement for St. Joseph and John Parochial School with PSI, and the new allocation amount is listed there as $35,505.97. And the second revision is for St. Albert the Great from that same September 12th meeting. Again, there's a new allocation amount from what was previously approved for the total of $2,353.14. Any questions on curriculum?
Cameron, can you just highlight that the funds for both of those agreements? Because I think there's a lot of attention on where our tax money is going and what it's paying for.
So these are just pass-through funds. So as it says, so these are, we are the fiduciary responsible people, so I will see. So as it says, so these are, we are the fiduciary responsible people, so I will stop there and give George the rest of the opportunity to share how these funds come to the district.
So these are Title One funds. With Title One funds, there's, Title One funds are federal funds. The federal government allocates to the state of Ohio. The state of Ohio allocates it to school districts via a funding formula from the federal They are, we're the, as Cameron stated, we're the fiduciary. The reason for the increases is there was reallocation based on carryovers and sweeps across the state and reallocation. So as we get reallocations, as do a portion of it goes to the non-publics, so it's just allocating their portion back to them. And this is what they use their Title Ones for, Title One funds for, so it's just increasing the contract.
Thank you.
And that concludes my report.
Next is the adoption of consent calendar. Action by the Board of Education, adoption of consent calendar. If this point in the agenda means that all items appearing in this agenda are noted as type action consent, which items constitute consent calendar are adopted by one single motion unless a member of the board or superintendent requests that such items be removed from consent calendar and voted upon separately. That a motion?
Some moved.
Second?
Second.
Does anything need to be removed? Hearing none. George, can you take the roll?
Ms. Stachek?
Yes.
Ms. Kilbane?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mrs. Hausel?
Yes.
And Mrs. Bissell?
Yes.
Motion passes. We'll turn it over to you, George.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Hausel. I have my items for tonight, and they're on a separate consent calendar, or consent agenda, I should say. And the reason for that is last year, new legislation went into effect in 2024, or beginning of 2024. We had the similar process last March where this time of year, Board of Revision, property tax complaints can be filed to the Board of Revisions. There's two types of processes. One homeowner, landowners, homeowners and commercial property can file to the Board of Revisions by the end of March to lower their taxable value or their assessed value. And then also, school districts have the same opportunity to file against the property owners for what they believe is property that's undervalued. We only look at commercial property. And then based on the new legislation, we can only file against properties that exceed ten percent of the sale price plus an additional five hundred thousand. So we have an attorney that looks at this for us, David Seed from Seed, Brenza McIntyre. Based on his recommendation, there's the seven properties listed there as a discussion item, the potential gain in revenue if, if the Board of Revisions agree with our market value. Once, this approval is just for David to authorize to file, and then there's the Board of Revision process where both sides have to present where they believe the fair market value is. The potential gain in revenue for these is one hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. They're listed, the properties are listed on the agenda in the discussion area, and then Item N is the consent calendar two that would approve the, approve, approve these seven properties to file for David. So as part of the new legislation, we were able to just go ahead and do this in the past as part of the legislation that, in addition to that these be exceeding ten percent of the sale value plus five hundred thousand, that they be approved at a public meeting prior to attorney doing it. So any questions that you may go through the properties or?
Anyone want George to go through each property or have a chance to take a look at everything?
Yep.
Yep.
All right. So Item N, which is the consent calendar, so action by the Board of Education and adoption of Consent Calendar Two, tax complaints at this point of the agenda means that all items appearing in tax report, or Treasuries Report, Tax Complaints, Items N one through M seven, which items constitute the Consent Calendar Two, tax complaints are adopted by one single motion unless a member of the board or superintendent requests that such items be removed from Consent Calendar Two, tax complaints, and voted upon separately.
Do I have a motion?
Some moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Stachek, second by Mrs. Kilbane. Any other questions or comments? Right, hearing none. Can you take the roll?
Ms. Stachek?
Yes.
Ms. Kilbane?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mrs. Hausel?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissell?
Yes.
Motion passes. All right, is that all you had, George?
Yes, that concludes my report.
All right, sounds good. Thank you. All right, we'll go to Board of Education Other. Our first item under that is a board policy discussion. We are going to discuss our cash balance reserve policy. We have talked about this several times, and what do we want to do? You know, go from, we're at a five-year right now, do we want to bring it to three years? We have some recommendations, and George, I don't know, do you want to go through the recommendation?
So the rec, I believe the, so right now, I'm sorry, right now, the, the policy states that we have ninety days cash balance within five years, the five-year forecast, or at least any year of the five-year forecast, so essentially the fifth year. I believe currently the recommendation from the Policy Committee was to move it to at least the third year. That way, it doesn't give the perception that we have too much cash. That third year is kind of what also the state looks at. So as long as we're addressing, that third, that third year will be out of the state's radar, but as that third year becomes a second year and so, so on, then it could lead to further action that the board might, may need to address. And then depending on if years four or five become negative, it might be inability to certify our contracts. So just kind of some of the pros and cons of looking at that. But the recommendation, I think, from the finance, or the Policy Committee was to move it to that third year.
The third year, okay.
And then based on the discussions that we had and took a look at of saying, the board should consider a few things, right? So the, Richard brought this up at the last meeting of the trigger for the policy is whenever we hit it, whatever year it's in, we have to come to the board and say, what do you want to do? Do you want to go for new money and a new levy, or do you want us to make reductions? If the idea is when George and I come to you, we don't have to come with a fully vetted reduction plan, that helps us not to cause undue panic within the district and our staff and our community prior to board direction. So if the will of this board is, hey, let us know when we're there, then after further discussion, we will tell you what you are to do, then we were okay with that.
Right.
It was if the trigger went and we've got to come with that, that would put us in a difficult spot. And as George said, even though the Policy Committee said three, after further reflection, we said at minimum four because of the contracts, like he said, or you could just leave it the same. And that's why, as you see in your, on the screen and on your screen, the green is new language that we, it's just a nice intro to it that we added. The yellow is really what you have to discuss and decide.
All right, so where do you guys want to start?
I'll start.
You want to go first?
Sure.
Thank you.
So I'm going to advocate that we leave it alone. The, the purpose of the cash balance reserve when we designed it was to give us an additional indicator, an additional tool. It's funny that the way things have played out with the voter, there, there was this messaging that we have too much money. The point of the cash reserve balance was, was to give the board an additional tool beyond the five-year forecast. And so I don't see any reason to, to change from year five. The, and as Cameron pointed out, if anything gets triggered by this policy, it's George and Cameron's job to inform the board. That's the, the tool, whether it's, you know, think of it as a speedometer or a, a traffic signal. That's the tool. The response is then, we now have enough time to react. The five-year forecast, you know, good, better and different, one of the difficulties with it is if you get into, trouble's the wrong way to describe it, but if you get into trouble with the state, it's almost too late. You, you don't have options, you can't course correct, you can't make decisions with the community and communicate with the community. The state is going to prescribe what the, what your course of action is to resolve the deficiencies in the five-year forecast. So this gives us that additional two years so that we do have the time as a board to strategize, and then as a community to determine how are we going to right the ship. I do like the preamble. I think it highlights what we as a board have to do, and we've talked about this quite a bit in the last two years. We have to balance needs of the taxpayer, and the needs of the taxpayer are usually the same, to pay as little as possible, period. But we have to balance that with the needs of educating students, and there's the rub. So I think that the preamble does a nice job of highlighting where our values are and how we use them to judge it.
Our Policy Committee, do you guys want to chime in since you guys have dug into this policy?
I think Cameron did a good job of summarizing where we, you know, landed at. And for me personally, I think, I mean, I could go with the four or five. I think it still gives us time, but I'm, I guess I lean towards leaving it alone. The important part to me was the piece that, that Richard brought up at the meeting. It really, it's a matter of the language, but the language says we just have to be notified. It doesn't mean we have to take action. And that was my fear, that, that we weren't following the policy because we weren't taking action. It actually doesn't demand that we do so. So I do think that we can effectively follow, both follow the policy and hold if we need to, and I like that it allows us to do this. I do want to draw attention to the one line, as Richard pointed out in the said preamble, that's, this is the part that really stuck with me, and I think this is one of the disconnects that's happening right now in the community, is, says, "The board believes the financial goals of the district," this is the last line, "should be in alignment with the district's strategic plan and instructional goals." So we spent a lot of time, are we in year two of the plan? With the community in a process of strategic planning and decided what we wanted to do, but we have to fund that vision. And so I think this is important to be there to remind the community that you agreed on this plan, you had input, you had a say, we talked about it, this is the vision you want for our students, but we have to fund it. And I think that allows us to come back to it as many times as we need to, to just remind people that, you know, anything is going to cost money. And so I'm, I am okay with, I like that, I like to leave the green, which I think we already decided on.
Yeah.
But, and I do think that it's most helpful for George if we leave the fifth year there. So I think that's, that's what I would say at this point.
Thank you. Very well said. Sharon, Haley?
I agree. Very well said.
I agree.
So I think we're in consensus, leave it at five years.
All right, so on the, because we've talked about this multiple times, just to give direction, on the March regular meeting, do you want to go through the three vote process, or do you want to waive the first two and just vote on the policy next meeting?
I think we could waive the first two, but.
Yeah.
Because the only thing we're changing, right, is adding the green.
That green, that's it.
So that's not, yeah, it's not consequential to the actual, you know, implementation of the policy.
Okay.
What do you think?
I like the opportunity to highlight it for the next three meetings, only because it's a messaging tool.
Yeah. All right. So we will do the thing.
But I don't, I would support waiving the readings.
Okay. Consensus says waive them.
Okay, okay. We'll have that on the next meeting for you.
All right, thank you. All right, next under Board of Education Other, we are going to discuss the future levy and bond issues. And I'm going to ask Dr. Reba to get us started, since he and George put this spreadsheet together for us.
Yeah, so obviously, earlier this year, the board gave the direction that we're not going on the ballot in May of twenty-five, so then we said, hey, we'll, we'll have some future discussions as to when we're going to go up, back on the ballot. So recently, George and I sat down and met to, to share some thoughts with the board that you guys can consider as you make your decisions. And so just to kind of frame what this conversation is about today, the conversation is laying out all of the options over the next five election cycles that are there with the first, the decision that needs to be made most readily is when. So that's really our goal for today. Explore all options, start to lean in, if not give direction on here's the election we want to go with, and then there's other things, obviously, we have to do from there, but that would be a key decision. So George and I are going to partner on this. He's going to take the, the first couple rows and kind of explain that piece of it, and then I'll take the last couple. So go ahead, George.
Thank you, Dr. Reba. So what we did was, we looked at each election cycle in the sense of the election date. So we believe in these years, it's definitely November and then May, the only time it goes in March, I believe, is the presidential election. So what we did was, the first three rows, what we looked at is, if we go that election period, when do we start collecting on a tax levy? And this is more operations than the bond, but the operations we would collect on, if we went this November, we would collect a half year in fiscal year twenty twenty-six. Because, the reason for the half year, it's you begin on the calendar year. Since our fiscal year overlaps two calendar years, so if it were approved this November of twenty twenty-five, we would begin collecting in January of twenty twenty-six, which would be fiscal year twenty-six, just the first half collection. Then we looked at what other school ballot issues do we have? So this November, we have two board seats that are up, and then there's the other local and statewide issues. This November, we would have the city council as well. So we would have the city council at large, and then the two board seats that are up. And then looking at May of twenty twenty-six, we would get a half-year collection in fiscal year twenty twenty-seven, so although it would be approved in May of twenty twenty-six, we wouldn't start collecting until January of twenty twenty-seven. In the May election, we have the governor's primary as well as any other state primary issues. And then kind of moving on to the next three rows, also in fiscal year twenty twenty-six, we would end the cash with a, our ending cash balance would be thirty-three point nine million, and our deficit spend for fiscal year twenty-six would be eleven point six. And for reference, fiscal year twenty-six is next school year. We're currently in fiscal year twenty-five. And then also, these, these numbers don't take into effect any reductions in the governor's proposal, the state budget, also any contract negotiations that we currently have, and then any decisions that we make with the Fund Oh Seven Oh. This is just our forecast that was presented in November with some projected savings as of this year. So none of the other things that are currently going on with the governor's budget and salary negotiations. November of twenty twenty-six, same thing, it's still, whether it was approved in May of twenty twenty-six or November of twenty twenty-six, collections wouldn't begin until January of twenty seven, so half-year collection in twenty twenty-seven. The school ballot issue that we would have at that time is, this will be the first opportunity for us to go for our other five-year renewal that was first approved in two thousand and two. That's the earliest we can go. And the latest we can go is November of twenty twenty-seven, which in terms, that expires. November of twenty twenty-six, we have the governor election and other statewide elections as well. And then May of twenty twenty-seven, November twenty-six and May of twenty-seven, they're the same fiscal year. If we go May of twenty-seven, we would start collecting half-year in fiscal year twenty-eight. We would end fiscal year twenty-seven with an ending cash balance of twenty point one million, and then a deficit spend of thirteen point eight million. And again, those figures don't include the governor's budget and any other contract negotiations. So any questions on those six rows? So any questions on those six rows?
So taking a look at all of that and going down to the considerations row. I'm sorry, Rich, did you have something?
So just to be clear, as far as it not including the biennium budget and not including any contract, you're not suggesting that it could improve. You're being clear that it is likely that the governor, that the biennium budget is not going to improve our picture.
Correct.
And one would assume contract negotiations only are going to get more expensive.
Correct.
They're not going to improve. So the, I just want to make sure that we understand what we're saying. This is best-case scenario, and we acknowledge that that best-case scenario is not going to continue. The deficit spend is going to increase, the ending cash balance is going to decrease.
Right. And then the other factor too is, if we have, could offset a little bit if we have any forecast savings throughout those years. But to your point, yes.
I knew that, I think everyone sitting at this table knew that, but sometimes that doesn't come across clearly.
So moving on to the considerations, we color-coded it as you would assume it would be, so yellow is, yes, we could do that, but maybe a more cautious thought process to that, green is what we're identifying as the optimum window, and red is what we're identifying as too late. So if we take a look in November of 2025, yes, that would be an opportunity for us to go on the ballot, but obviously, we all know that we had three losses in a row up until November of 2024. The community feedback that has been received, whether it be from the vote, or that our cash balance is too high, spend it down, things of that nature, we are sharing that we believe it may be too early to go back on the ballot, that more time may be needed to put our planning together and to address the community feedback. One of the points of feedback, and it's why we're in such a good financial position, over the years that we've been together as a team, we have looked into the future of our forecast and said, here's when we're going to start deficit spending. Before we go down that snowball of deficit spending, let's pass a levy, and let's address it so that we don't, for lack of a better term, dip into our savings account and have to backfill it, which is not going to get you as far as if you kept a little bit of savings there. Based on recent votes, it does not seem that the community may be supportive of that moving forward. And so one of the suggestions to consider is, do we need to actually realize a deficit spend in the five-year forecast? Dave, is it the speakers, you think? Can you shut it off over there?
I turned down the volume here, just to...
What's that? Yeah, I don't know. Let's see if that works. Yeah, keep doing that. All right. So again, to reiterate, one of the things to consider is, as George shares his five-year forecast, he has our current year, but he also has, here's what we did last year. Do we need to realize as minimal as possible, hopefully, but that that's a deficit spend to be able to say, hey, we are not, we can take away the talking point that you're saying you're going to deficit spend, but we don't see it on your forecast, it's just projected. Well, here it is, we're deficit spending, now we need the financial support. So that's what our recommendation is for November of 2025. As we look into that optimum window of what we're suggesting of May of '26 or November of '26, one of the things that the board needs to consider, as George shared, what are you going to do with the 2002 renewal? Whether you go in May or November, we feel that the board needs to give clarity as to whether you're going to continue to put that on the ballot, or maybe you're going to say, we're going to let that renewal go, and we're just going to package it all into a new levy. The one thing to consider is, again, that's a five-year limited renewal. At the time it was passed, George could probably speak a little better than I can if I missed something, but there was a homestead rollback credit that was given to the taxpayers. They changed the law that said that's no longer a thing. So if we get rid of that renewal and put a new levy on the ballot, that credit will no longer be a part of that levy. George, is there any other clarification you want to make on that?
Yeah, that credit is a 10% credit given to homeowners that, if the property is not used for business use. So in November of 2013, that credit went away for new levies. So that, and the homeowners get that credit, and we receive the money through the state allocation, the state of Ohio. In 2013, the state did away with that provision for that credit, so we still get the same amount, the taxpayers pay 10% more than they would have under the previous way. So since this is a 2000, since this was originally passed in 2002, that 10% credit is there. The 2019 levy did not have that 10% credit because it was approved after that. So if it's no longer a renewal packaged as a new levy, that credit is no longer there.
Can you clarify, is it all homeowners or just certain ones?
It is mainly for residential property, for non-business use.
It is, it is all homeowners. There's also a credit that I think you might be thinking about that is for senior citizens and disabled.
Well, one's 10%, the other one's 2.5%, so the 2.5% will still be there.
That will hold.
That'll hold.
Okay.
But that only applies to disabled and certain seniors with certain income limits.
Homestead, something or other.
Homestead means my home, so there are different rollbacks, but the one that George is talking about is the 10% homestead rollback, and that was an effort many years ago by the state to mitigate the environment we're in now, where home property values are rising a lot, and the property tax consequences. So I forget what year they did the rollback.
I don't know when it went to effect, but 2013 is when that's 1%.
Yeah, I know when they stopped doing it, but ultimately, what it said was, is if you look at your property tax bill, you'll see a reduction, and it'll say, homestead rollback, and then the state, through income tax collections, makes the school district whole on that amount.
The 10% was enacted in the early 1970s, and the 2.5% was 1979. And then there's current proposals now in the, through legislation on various types of credits and freezing certain levels of tax growth too. So by the time we hit one of these timelines, it might be, we might be looking at different types of, if anything is approved.
I'll piggyback off of that, because that's how I look at it. It's good to be aware of all of the rules, voodoo details, but right now, the state legislature seems very motivated to address all of these issues. So I don't know, I don't know how much worth there is for us to try to make a decision based on one thing or another, because I think the coconuts are going to get moved around.
So once again, no matter when the board goes for a new issue, but especially in May and November of '26, have to decide what are we going to do with that renewal, and be prepared to clearly communicate that as we plan. In terms of the ballot issues, we've had many discussions in the past of, we wanted to get our operating money solidified, and then take a look at the challenges we're having with space at the age of our elementary buildings. Based on our discussions, we can no longer kind of look at that linear approach of, let's pass one, and then we can pass another. Space is a critical need, especially if you take a look at whenever a bond issue is passed for another four to five years to actually be in those buildings. So that's why George and I have shared that we would ask the board to consider a bond and an operating levy together. And again, as we implied, probably would be best to let the 2002 renewal go, create a new operating levy that would last us for X amount of years as the board directs, as well as a bond issue to address elementary buildings and any other athletic or performing arts facilities as the board decides. So as we take a look, and again, not for today's meeting, but just as an FYI, as you take a look at a new operating levy, we just wanted to remind the board of options that you have. So you have the option of a limited operating levy, that's what we, the 2002, the 2009, it's just for a five-year term. We know that one well. There's a continuing, which was what we went for in November of '24, just means we'll continue to collect upon it until the board decides at such time we don't, no longer need to, if that becomes the case. An emergency levy is for a set period of time, typically 10 years, right, George?
You can go up to 10.
Up to 10 years, you can go, and it's a set dollar amount. So instead of a millage amount, you would say, hey, we need to collect X million dollars, and that would be what you would collect on an annual basis for a 10-year period. And you could also do an incremental levy. So one of the things to consider is, with the 2002 renewal, even though we can go forward in November of 2026, it collects through December 31st, 2027. So you can do what's called an incremental levy that says, we are going to pass this levy, but in year one of it, we're only going to collect at this level. I'm making this up, but let's say, we're only going to collect at 4 mils. The next year, we'll collect at 4.5 mils, the year thereafter, we'll collect at 4.9, and that's where it will live forever. So you can balance out the 2002 levy when it phases out, with the new levy coming on, and you're not double-dipping, for lack of a better term. So that's called an incremental levy. The other consideration that just needs to be on people's mind is the 20 mil floor. So George has explained this many times, but we have effective millage rates, here's the millage we passed, here's what it is based on the city's valuation. What is our millage rate right now, George? Effective millage, you know?
Residential, I want to say somewhere in 25, 24, 25 mils?
Okay.
I could look up and get a better answer.
Yeah.
Somewhere in that ballpark.
But just somewhere in the mid-20 mils. As property values rise, which we've got another three-year reavow coming in November of '27, the millage effective rate typically declines based on where we're at, and there is a law that says, once you dip below the 20 mil floor, you will always collect at 20 mils. So House Bill 920, as we all know, which caps what you can collect, is no longer in effect, so you do grow as property values grow if your effective millage rate is at that 20 mil floor. So that's, we are getting close to that, so that's just something else to keep in mind as you take a look at our district finances.
And the emergency levy does not go count towards the 20 mil floor calculation?
And just like there's a whole bunch of other legislation, there's a whole bunch of legislation about all of this stuff as well, so that's what we've done. And, you know, like I shared at the beginning, we're at the will of the board to help support in any way, but when, timeline, those are all crucial things that will help us take our first step forward.
Thank you. So tonight, one of the first things we need to decide is, when? When do we want to go to the community and ask for this bond slash levy?
Can I ask George a question first?
Sure.
If we hit the 20 mil floor, is there a scenario where we would ever come back off of that?
There would be, yes. If values were to go down.
Down, okay.
Or if we would enact a new operating levy.
Okay.
If values aren't increasing to the need we would need them to increase, and we would need to go out for a completely new issue, that would increase the floor, that would essentially get you off the floor.
Okay. Thank you.
And we're currently at residential property. Our effective millage rate is 25.11 mils. So we would need about a, with a current triennial that, or six-year that just passed, we were around 35 mils, so it came off by 10%. Half was for the renewal coming off, or not 10%, 10 mils, half was for the renewal coming off, and then the other half was the reduction based on the increase in values. So between, there's a triennial in three years and a six-year in three years. If the combination of those two increase by, values increase by 30% again, then we would be close to that 20 mil floor.
All right, so first discussing when, what our timeline is. Talking November '25, May '26, November '26. Who would like to start?
I think November '25 is way too soon. So I agree with it being yellow and not green. Yield. Do not proceed.
Caution.
I just wanted to piggyback off of what Cameron said about the colors, in terms of the red being, this is too late. It is my perception that it's already too late, right? Like, we are kind of in a pickle right now. So I just want the public to know that, like, this is, red is crisis mode, but we are already in a jam because we really needed to be able to have at least addressed the bond issue at this point, our buildings, and even parking lots, as was attended to tonight, not necessarily the middle school, but I've seen some of the elementary lots myself, new buildings could address those issues as well. We are in critical need of these new buildings. So in my opinion, we're already too late, but, and if you know me, I am a, let's do it yesterday person, there's a problem, I'm going to fix it now. However, I have serious concerns about doing it in November. It pains me to say that I think we have to wait till May, because, a whole, but, I mean, I could go on and on, but I just think it's ill-advised to do it, it's too soon for the voter, I think it's too soon for our volunteers, it's too soon for all those people that are involved in the work. I think it's too soon.
Just to kind of piggyback off of that, like, Rich and I sat in the facility meeting, and like you said, it's already too late. We have buildings that are in critical need of repairs, you know, we need roofs, we need windows, and these aren't things that we can wait, we have to keep our students safe. So I 100% agree with you, we're already in critical need, but it's the same, every, I've talked to my neighbors, I've talked to other community members, and I haven't had one person say, yes, you need to do this in November. I think we've fatigued the voters, I think we need to prove that we are deficit spending, that we are spending down this cash balance that everyone has talked about. So I agree, the yellow is, it would be very tough for us to go in November, I think.
And we have to do some fundraising too, to be able to campaign for it?
Yeah, we really don't have any money to campaign.
We need to give the committee and the volunteers the time they need.
And a plan.
With the plan that we've set forward, which is what we're working on tonight, and we need to give them time. I mean, none of this comes easy, and it costs a pretty penny, so I think that's a consideration too.
I don't think I need to add to it. I think we can move on.
Do you want to know tonight, May versus November? May of '26, November '26?
As long as you're offering, sure.
Okay. I'd be up for May.
I think maybe, yeah. May gives us a solid year, too.
Right.
And I feel like November might be too late.
Right.
Yeah, I would be up for May.
Okay.
I think May makes a lot of sense, given some of the data that is presented here. One, it'll have primaries, but there's not huge issues, we have a habit of passing things in May. The other risk is, should it fail the first time, and we have to think about that in our planning, if we do it in November, it's going to push us into May '27, which is, the red is flashing, right? At least if we do May '26, we have two in the green area, we have two shots at it. And I like May '26 because it's in the fiscal year when we can start talking about the other levy, and so that does give us an opportunity to kind of, if we want to have the conversation about one vote, I think May is the first, the earliest we really could do that. So that's my thoughts.
So with that consensus, we'll move forward and start planning our timelines off of that, so I greatly appreciate your thoughtful discussion and insights and guidance on that. And with that, what I would ask Laura to think about is, when we come back in our regular meeting next, in a couple weeks... the next question that we've got to take a look at is, if we're going in May, and we're having discussions about possibly doing a bond and levy together, the next thing that's going to take some time is, does the board want to stick with the same plan that was recommended a year ago? We had the elementary facilities planning committee, the board approved that recommended plan of what that bond was going to be. It was halted with the first levy failure. So do we want to, do we want to bring up that same plan, review it, see, stick with it? Or are we looking at possibly revising that? We now have a year and some change, or less than that with campaigning, or, you know, putting it out there. But that would be the next decision point we'd have to make. So Laura, you and I will talk and see which agenda you want to have that on. We're going to be ready as soon as the next, next meeting.
I have a question about that. I know facilities development met recently, and they're going to come and present at a board meeting, but was this subject on their agenda at all? Okay.
The, the agenda was all about, what are the imminent capital improvement projects we have to do? So that's what they'll come and present.
Do you need anything else from us tonight? We're good.
The one thing I would ask, I don't need it tonight, but just to start thinking about, as we get closer to, to next May, and when we start thinking about the, the ask. So think about the length of how long we want the funds to last, because that will generate the, the ask in the dollar amount. I think last time, we wanted it to last 10 years. So how long do we want it to last this time? So just start thinking about it, and as we get closer to that point.
Okay.
We would need to know that.
All right. Any other questions, discussion? All right, moving on. Item three, under Board of Education, other is miscellaneous. Does anyone have any miscellaneous?
I have one.
You do?
I do. I had the good fortune yesterday to attend the Northeast Region Spring Conference. It was at our Lorraine JVS. So it was fun to compare and contrast Lorraine's Joint Vocational School District with Polaris. I was there to pick up a 10-year certificate that has been waiting for a couple of years, but I just wanted to give Mrs. Bissell a shout-out. She got the service award, which highlights board members who have done certain activities to improve their boardsmanship. It's not a, a low bar, so congratulations to Michelle, and thank you for your commitment to the, to the school district. And the one thing that was really neat for me is they honored a board member who has a 40-year history on her particular school board. So they then also brought in a psychologist for some testing, but that's a different story. So, but congratulations to Michelle, and thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Any other miscellaneous? It would be hard to follow that one up. All right, next, executive session. We do have need for executive session to...
Consider the employment of a public employee.
Do I have a motion?
Still moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Stavchak, Ms. Stavchak, second by Mrs. Kilbane. Any discussion? Hearing none, George can take the role?
Ms. Stavchak?
Yes.
Ms. Kilbane?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Ms. Howson?
Yes.
And Mrs. Bissell?
Yes.
We will enter into executive session around approximately 8:20. We don't see any need for any more public business, so I want to wish everyone a good night.